It has moved over to Melkirk's office.
All right, seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, to the republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Welcome, everyone. This is the Town of Victor zoning Board of Appeals. A few ground rules first. Emergency exits, hopefully you see them on the sides and in the back. Restrooms are in the lobby area. If you haven't done so already, please sign in with the attendance sheet. If there are any business cards, please leave them there also for the planning department. Also, if you have cell phones, please either silence them or turn them off. If you have any conversations that you'd like to occur, please take them out into the lobby so as not to disturb the meeting. As far as the meeting itself goes, we'll give the applicant an opportunity to make their presentation. The board generally will make as few interruptions as possible, but there will be a discussion. There will be questions from the board, and all that we ask you is, is that we won't talk over you and you won't talk over us, and primarily so we create a good record, because in a minute, you're going to see, we're going to approve the minutes, and the minutes are being transcribed, and if there's this talking over each other, it's going to make some of our jobs a little more harder than it ought to be. So, if there are any exhibits, you may certainly present them. Let us know if you do approach, and we'll mark them. And if you can, if you're talking about a diagram or a photo that you want to discuss, do your very best, compass directions, location. Instead of saying, "Well, if you can see over here and over there," well, the transcribed record is difficult to figure out what it is that you're talking about. So if you can use landmarks, compass directions, that would certainly be helpful. All right, with that in mind, the next thing I would like is for the March 7, 2022 minutes. We need that approved. Can we get a motion for that?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Fred. Second?
I'll second it.
Donna, thank you, Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried. Thanks. All right, first is cases. Is that how it's pronounced? No. Yeah, combine up. How do you pronounce it?
Cassius.
All right, then.
So, I'm Cassius. I'm Christina Casseres.
Okay.
I am here on behalf of, applicant is Jamie Bracy. He works with us in our office. I'm on his behalf. And the behalf of Kohl's slash Sephora. We are requesting for an area variance to add the Sephora signage onto the building where Kohl's is currently at. The sign is 32.32 square feet, 24 inches tall, and it illuminates at night. It'll be at the side entrance to Sephora. I mean, to Kohl's, within Kohl's.
When you're done, just let me know.
All done.
Okay, great. So, you're aware the code requires, or at least it prohibits what you're asking for, is putting another sign specifically a particular brand name in addition to the Kohl's sign. So, if you look to the criteria, do you understand that to grant a variance, that the, not every one of the criteria is met, but it's a balancing test, if you will. So, have you given that any thought about why your company is asking for variance and why it should be granted?
So, the reason why we're doing this is because, so Kohl's and Sephora are collaborating, collaborating their brand together across the whole entire country. They're not just doing this here. They are basically doing the same thing that was at JCPenney, that, you know, JCPenney basically has been doing away with because they're downsizing, bankruptcy, all that stuff. So, Kohl's and Sephora partner together, and that's why they're doing something that, it is a little different, but it's so that people know that Sephora is within Kohl's.
So let me ask you this. Let's take an example. Sell Adidas and Nike and Converse and all the other, I'm sure I'm missing a lot. Why shouldn't, if Dick's comes in and asks, "Hey, we want Adidas and Nike and all those other brand names plastered all over the side of Dick's," what's the difference between the two? Or are they the same?
I understand. I believe, well, we feel that this is a little bit different. They're not putting, you don't have Dick's Sporting Goods slash Adidas, and you're not going to be able to do that because everything is within their store. You know that, that that's what they sell when you walk in the door. They sell Carhartt, they sell everything, and that's why they advertise it sometimes in their windows, you know, as whatever season comes in. But in this case, it's going to be permanent. They're not just going to be, like, moving out in the next future. That they're trying to make a deal where they're together as partners.
Is this going to be a forever-long term that Kohl's and...
They hope so, yes.
So that you're asking that for the two names to be on the side of that building for as long as Kohl's and Sephora exist? Now, when I say okay, I don't mean it's okay that I'm agreeing with.
I understand, yeah.
All right, I'd like to ask the board if they have any questions. Sarah, questions?
No, I don't really have questions. Is Sephora moving from the mall to this location?
I do not know that. I assume they might.
Because there wasn't a sign at Sephora's on the exterior of the mall, so justification as to why it needs to be at Kohl's.
How far is, I'm not familiar with that.
No, there was no exterior.
No, is it, is it far from the mall to this Kohl's?
No.
No. I do not know that. That is a good question. I don't know if they have the manpower. I think that what they're doing is Kohl's employees are going to be people who are going to be working in the Sephora department, because what it's going to be is an all-open, you can walk, I don't know if you've been to one that's inside of JCPenney that had Sephora, that you walk through JCPenney from another exit or entrance, and then you walk through, and then you're in Sephora, you can pick up whatever you want, buy whatever you want, and then keep walking through the store if you want to keep buying stuff from JCPenney, and this is the same case as Kohl's.
I don't really have anything else. I don't necessarily think that justifies an additional sign. I agree with you, Mike, because in that same plaza, there's Walmart and AT&amp;T, and they, they could turn around and come back to us and say, "I would like to put iPhone on my sign with AT&amp;T." Well, how do we justify that they can't do that, then? So, I'm not, the way this application is presented, as well as there's really isn't support in my eyes for it, I wouldn't support this the way it's presented, but that's all I have.
Donna, questions, comments?
Where is it that you want to put the sign?
So, if you are, this is the, to the right of the main entrance, so if you're looking at Kohl's, the letters Kohl's, it's going to be to the right, so over their entrance. Their entrance is, I believe it's already painted black and white like that.
Okay.
And then the small... Sorry.
And JCPenney's does not have those, has never had those? Sephora's been there a while?
I don't think that they did. Sephora was very, very well, like, marketed with JCPenney in that time, so that's why they're doing this, this way now.
Okay. I'm in agreeance with Sarah and Mike.
Yeah?
I'm in the same boat. It's, it's a tough one, right? It's, it didn't acquire Sephora, it's a partnership, much like Best Buy would spin that they have a partnership with Sharp for TVs or Panasonic or somebody like that. The, the signs, as I'm looking at the sign plan here, it's, it's more than just putting up one sign, right? It's adding that sign, plus it's adding Sephora to the larger Kohl's sign, as well as the sign, the monument sign out by the road. And I just think, you know, as is, again, unless there's some other, you know, evidence that you bring forth, it's really just a, "Hey, we have a partnership with a company, we'd like to put them on our sign, can we have a slightly larger sign and mention them there?" And it's just, it's just very explicitly not, not allowed per the code, again, unless we have, you know, unless the application has something unique about it other than just a partnership. I'm not, if there's anything you want to add to it, I'm open to it, but at this point, I just don't see why everybody else wouldn't do something similar in an opportunity to try to grab more, more square footage for their signs and to get more out there like that. So I don't really see anything unique about this.
I understand. I think that what they're trying to really do is to obviously bring more business. I could ask, go back and ask Sephora and Kohl's if they're going to have the other store closed in the mall, and that's why they're doing this, because they want to have people to come in to that specific area to, because that's where their store is going to be.
Sure, no, I, I get it.
I understand that.
But at the end of the day, the, the relationship Kohl's has with Sephora is still similar, as the example is with, with Best Buy and Panasonic. They sell their TVs, they've got their employees, and they're selling TVs, they've got a Panasonic section, you know, within the store, and you could very easily also be up here, right, pitching the same thing to Best Buy, and I don't think there would be anything different about it. If it was, I don't know, I don't want to go into hypotheticals, but there's, if there was something more unique about it, I think it would, you know, it might meet the bar, but I just don't, I just don't think it meets the bar. Whether or not they're in the mall or not, it's really just two different companies, and one's maybe leasing some space from the other, or there's some synergies of both of them coming together, right, and utilizing their, their staff to sell their product. But I just don't see how in this situation, there's really anything unique about it other than, I see why they would want it up there. If I was Sephora, I would want, you know, my name out there as much as possible, but if Sephora, in my opinion, and you could tell them this, I guess, if Sephora wants their name on the wall, then they can lease, lease the space next door or something to be able to have the privilege of having that. That's the only thing I can think of. Again, unless there's, there's something unique about it.
Okay.
Fred, questions, comments?
I think it makes it look like there's two stores. If Kohl's wants to sell Sephora, it's up to them to inform public. Doesn't look good to me.
And I think the message the board, I think, is trying to deliver is, if this was a rebrand, if those two companies were merging, it might be a different story, but as the board, I think, has pointed out in different ways, this is a separate organization coming in, trying to get more advertising for the, whatever it is you're selling inside of Kohl's. These are not one of the same companies, they're two separate companies. Is that fair to say? It's not a merge.
It's similar to a merge, but they're, they're not leasing, they're not paying for their leasing in the store, as I know of. So I think they're basically like merging, but they're not paying.
I need, we're going to need a clear answer. If it's a merge, that might put a different tone on this thing. These are two separate companies run by two separate organizations. That's a different issue. So I think, what's happening here also is, this has to be referred to the county planning board?
Okay.
So, are you familiar with that process?
No.
All right, so because it's where the location of it, the county planning board pursuant to the law is required to give Victor their opinion on what they think is happening here, especially with the signage. If they decide that they want to take no action to it, the board can pretty much do whatever it wants. If they give us an opinion, asking us to take certain kinds of action, then we would need a supermajority.
Okay.
So, without knowing what they're going to do, it's kind of hard to predict, so you're going to have some time. They're going to, county planning board is when?
Thirteenth.
Okay, so 13th of April, so when we meet again, April 18th, we should have their decision. You'll have the decision to take a look at it. You'll certainly have another opportunity to comment. I would suggest that you go back to Kohl's and Sephora and let them know how this board is, let's say, leaning and thinking, and get a clear answer. Is this a merge?
Okay.
Or is it, these are two separate companies, and is what appears to happen is happening here is Sephora is really just looking for more advertising space. Right, on the, the frontage.
Okay.
All right, questions for us?
I'm sorry, you said, what date was that, next meeting for here?
The 18th.
Eighteenth, okay.
All right, so two weeks from today.
Okay. And we don't have to do anything, we just have to come back. You're going to, right, we don't have to submit anything else?
If you want to, you can. You don't have to.
Okay, I got you.
There's, applicants have come multiple times because we have, we're trying to find out more information. It's really up to the applicant to provide this board for as much information as possible.
Okay.
So that we can render a decision. And the board oftentimes gives the applicant hints and clues, it's like, "If you can give us this, maybe we can take a look at it a little bit differently." But as it stands right now, I don't think the board would rule in your favor. You have another chance, go get some more information for us, for something the county planning board does, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks, okay?
All right, perfect. Thank you guys.
Wait, wait, anybody from the public want to speak for or against the application? No, okay.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thanks so much. Wendy, are you Wendy? Your guest?
My guest? I don't know about that. Well, sorry. Hello, I'm Wendy Samire, live at 1520 Cranberry Pond Trail. So I guess we'll start with, I built a house that was a long nightmarish process, but finally I'm done. And I'm here because I need to get a variance for the house since it went into the 40-foot setback. I brought pictures, I don't know, so you can actually see if you'd like me to bring these up or no.
Sure, if you want to submit them. Can we have them?
Sure, you can have.
All right.
Here, I don't know if it would help to see things in color or not on a site plan. It helps it a little bit, and we're talking about...
We don't have these.
No, I just took them today. I thought it would help to...
On the back, let's do this. The one that has the, our sign under review, I'm going to mark as Exhibit A and put today's date on it. And the one that doesn't have a sign on it, that's going to be Exhibit B, with today's date on it. And you have circled what I'm presuming is the corner of the house that is encroaching.
Yes.
Right, on the front setback, and you need eight inches. Is that the substance of it?
That's it.
So, as you, if you want to make your more details, it's...
I can, well, I'll just say it doesn't change much of the look of the neighborhood. I know it doesn't change much besides that it went into a corner, and I, I'm going to say that I blame the contractor who did the site work as I, we've staked it out many times, and I don't know how it got changed, I, and what happened, but unfortunately it did. And I'm looking to get a variance to get it approved, that it's okay that it's sitting there.
When was the house built?
I just moved in four weeks ago.
You closed four weeks ago, right?
Right.
And the construction was from when to when, approximately?
From March of last year till, it was a long, painful, over budget.
Ovid.
All right. Sounds like my house.
This just was the icing to the cake when it came out for the survey and wasn't in the right spot.
All right, so I know it sounds like you don't want to push anybody in front of the bus. Why did this happen? You don't know?
No, I don't know.
All right, so you hire a contractor.
I hired a contractor. He did all the building of the house, of the framing and everything else. He did do not, he didn't do the foundation part of it.
I know. Tell us who you are.
I'm Chuck Johnson, Black Loe Builders. We came in after the house, the foundation was underway.
The foundation was a mess.
The foundation was a mess, but like, the site was like constant mud. It was kind of rainy season. I'm not making excuses up for the last guy, but I can kind of see how maybe some great stakes got kind of tipped a little bit. And if you look at the map, in the way the road is and the way the house is, it's like a slight kind of, almost pie. It's like eight inches on the long side, and it probably literally is two feet, two foot by, you know, eight inch pie. Literally, probably nobody knew until they came out and really put the pins in the ground and started pulling the, you know, all the measurements for the, you know, final time.
You know, were you part of the original survey, the process?
Nope. I, when, when I showed up, I was supposed to just be the framer, but we end up picking up the rest of the job and seeing it through to the end. So the foundation and everything was already set, and she's, she's in litigation with all, actually.
Okay, that helps. So you changed contractors?
Yes, oh yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there's a big litigation with the gentleman who did my foundation and all the site work.
Okay.
I've actually hired attorney and so...
So when we came in, we tried to, you know, make fit and move on rather than try to go backwards, and that's what we did. So we had to kind of use what was there, and we did, like this, like she said, because it's kind of the icing on the cake, where it's like, "Oh, yetsiyo," and here's the final, you know, dimensions of everything.
Instrument survey, and there you go. Oh, you're into your setback.
Okay, all right, understood. Matt, questions?
We're really only talking about eight inches here?
Right.
No questions?
And if you look how the road comes and the house sits, I think they tried to line it up on the pond.
I, I, I'm on the side of, we're only talking about eight inches here against a 40-foot setback. Somebody made a mistake. I mean, from my perspective, I don't really care who, who made the mistake. I mean, there's also estimating, sometimes people come out and they eyeball things, there's snow on the ground, you don't really know where the... I mean, there's a lot of variables that come into play, and this is probably the least controversial application I've had in front of me in 15 years, so.
We're just trying to, we're creating a record, and that's what we're trying to flush out, and I, I'm not going to pick on Adam, but you've had building experience, things happen, mud shifts, so you have a, anybody could lean on a stake, bulldozer hits it a little bit and clips it, there's a whole host of reasons.
I tried to keep replacing the stakes with metal stakes, but that didn't help in either. They just drive over those too, so.
We're just trying to create that good record so that when we do decide, we have something to go on.
Sure.
Donna, questions, comments?
None, it's all good.
Sarah, questions, comments?
Yeah, I have nothing either.
Fred?
Eight inches in a corner on that great big place, close enough.
Roger, are you okay?
Do I need to go up there?
Uh-oh.
If you want to say something.
Roger, was there through the whole pond?
Came all this way.
Yeah, so I live on 1507, right at the corner on the entrance. And I was at the site every morning watching these, see, can I say these guys were clowns? That's probably the nicest thing I could say about them. If they were that close, I'd be surprised. So that, that's basically, they did an amazing job if they got that close, so that's all I got to say.
You're, as far as when we asked for the public for or against, you'd be...
I am for granting the variance.
Got it.
Yeah.
Did we get his address?
1507.
Thank you.
Right at the corner, yeah.
All right. Adam, anything else you want to suggest, say? Al?
I'll just say that, you know, when we go out there to do the footer inspection, we have the site plan, we know what the setback's supposed to be, we try to fortunately estimate where the, we don't put down a tape measure, we try to estimate where the right-of-way line is, then pace it off. As they said, I'll verify, stakes get run over, they get pulled out, they're thrown aside, reinserted. It's, we're not surveyors when we go out to do it, so it does happen occasionally. This is probably third or fourth one I've seen since I've been here in 20 years.
Can't hear you.
It was constant mud the whole time.
You okay? Okay.
Well, I didn't know she was way over there. She's hiding over there.
We know she's there. All right, let's run through the criteria. First, an undesirable change would not be produced in the characters of neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the area variance. Common theme, I think, for all of these criteria is going to be, we're talking about eight inches, and we're talking about an unintentional error by a prior contractor that the applicant had to deal with. The applicant has had to deal with a bill that has been ongoing for approximately a year. It sounds like there's been a lot of headaches, so eight inches, as Fred has also pointed out, in a large parcel of property is relatively minor and not substantial. Would anyone like to add anything else to the first criteria? Second, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Again, eight inches, the only thing that could be done, I suppose, is to pick up the house and move it, and that's just not feasible. Would anyone like to add anything to the second criteria? Third, as previously stated, we're talking about an eight-inch variance. It's not substantial. I don't think there's anything more that needs to be said about that. Would anyone like to add anything to the third criteria? Fourth, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical, environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Eight inches is not going to create any kind of physical, environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Would anyone like to add anything to the fourth criteria? Fifth, the alleged difficulty is self-created, albeit not by the homeowner, but by the homeowner's contractors. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the variance can't be granted. Would anyone like to add anything to the fifth criteria or anything else? Right, hearing none. Does anyone entertain a, any conditions to this? I would think not. Okay, don't hear anything else. We have one neighbor that is, has observed, and also seemingly is indicating that it was a bit of a tough show for her in the, in the beginning, as far as the contractors go, and luckily you got the ship righted. So, one for the applicant. Anything else to be added? All right, I would entertain a motion for approval.
A motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Fred. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Hope you enjoy your home. Thanks for your patience.
Welcome to Victor.
Very good. Would anyone like to add or discuss anything before we entertain a motion for adjournment?
What happened to the shed application that was withdrawn? Will that be back, or is it settled?
Which one was this, the shed?
The shed. The shed got pulled.
I think it was shed.
Done, what, last week?
Didn't pay his application fee, and he got pulled.
Oh, okay. Never in front of us. Never in front of us.
No, he may be back, I believe he's going to planning board, but I'm not sure.
There's some details to be hashed out, because he did show up, and I spoke with him, and maybe he just sent the information in, and I haven't seen it, so.
Okay.
I'm off the hash out tomorrow, but presumably he'll be back, if not next meeting, the meeting after he gets everything in.
Yeah.
The, whatever those garage tent units on dryer, did you get a chance to look at those, or?
Yeah, so I sent a letter, sorry, I sent a letter to that address, as well as an address down the street that Al had passed on to me. It's been more than enough time without response, so notices of violation will be going out. They're on my desk, it's just the workflow got heavy real quick here in the past week and a half, so.
You had a chance to look at it?
Yeah, so I have, it seems like the quantity is more than even the satellite views, but I went out, and they seem permanent, even though they're a temporary style structure. He has them on basis, and also looks like there may be some activity as far as a business going on in that lot as well, so, you know, open the can up, get it going.
Oh, yes, take a look at it.
Is that application, is in for us?
No, I think it's, it's under investigation. Is that a fair way to put it?
By us?
Well, not this board, but...
Code enforcement.
Yeah. We had, we had asked Al, I don't know, a few weeks ago, to take a peek at it, and then Adam's now taken over, and I guess you've heard, he's, he's looking into it, sent a letter out to him, and see if we can get a response.
We have to give people a certain amount of time to respond, we can't just say, do it tomorrow, or else, so.
Yeah, so I, those were some of the first letters that I sent out personally of that type, and I did not put a timeframe on the letter, my original draft. It's been probably twice the amount of time that we normally allow, so then I'm going to move forward, because we've received no contact with the notice of violation, and then see if that brings them in.
That's good. Anything else from anyone?
Yeah, I saw, High Point has set up a new good-sized monument sign with slots for tenants' tenant names. Is that something that, obviously it must have been allowed per their district?
I believe that was approved through the planning board.
Yeah, that...
Way back, it is part of the...
Yes. I just closed out that permit, so that permit had already been approved, and from a while ago, from what I understand, finally got them in, and I went out and checked them.
I remember that, that was all a PDD, which basically has its own regulations, doesn't necessarily follow zoning codes or the sign code in this case.
Then we were following, was it the fence that was going through the conservation easement? Is that...
Herman?
...included, or?
No. No, that's in litigation.
Still, okay.
Yeah, we're going to maybe revisit that a little bit, it's in progress.
Yes.
Nothing for us to do just yet.
Fair enough.
Okay, anything else? Good, we're good, we're good. All right, motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks so much, everyone. Enjoy your evening.
I will not be here on the 18th, 19th. I can...